All right, Steve, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Well, welcome, everyone, and I'm calling the February 9th meeting of the Snow Library Trustees to order. So before doing anything else, I'd just like to welcome Jeffrey Paris, who I think you see on your screen as our new Board Secretary. So he'll be doing the minutes starting today. So that's great, good news. So hi Karen.
Hi.
Great, all right, so first order of business is, well, I guess I have to make my usual announcements. The we are recording this meeting. It is being broadcast live on the Towns YouTube channel. If anyone, and it's been, it will be recorded and made available as well after the meeting. Any person intending to record either audio record or video record, this open session is required to let me know. And I think with that, we're ready to move on to the first order, or to ask if there's any public comment. I don't see the public here, so I would take that as a no. So first order of business then is the minutes from our last meeting. January 12th, so we have a motion to accept the minutes.
A move.
A second. Mary Beth, thank you. So I have one very minor correction to the minutes. At the very beginning, where it talks about me announcing that the meeting is being recorded, it says that the chair announced that the meeting would be live on Channel 18 and recorded. In fact, that isn't exactly what I announced. It's live on the Towns YouTube channel and being recorded. So that minor change needs to be made.
Okay.
Any other edits for the minutes? Joan?
It's not an edit. Do you have to take attendance, Steve? Do you have to have everyone say that they're here so that Jeff could like write our names down?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, I think Jeff is well, for sure, we always list who's present. I don't know if we need to actually say that since Jeff can see the screen and see. Jeff's good, right? He's muted, so he's.
Yeah, I've got you guys. Thank you, though.
Okay, great.
David, if I could just be a knucklehead, I think only because I've been through this now for 10, 11 months. If you want to, and again, you don't need to do it, but in a future meeting, just to be absolutely compliant with the governor's guidance, you should actually do the role. And what I do is basically shout out each member's name. They say here and it's done, so.
All right, we'll do that in the future. Thank you, Kevin. So with that one slight amendment, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Welcome, Mary. Glad you could make it. Okay, next order of business is my report. I don't have a lot to report. I've got a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is along with Tavi, I did a legislative luncheon that Clams hosted a few weeks ago. Tavi has a nice report on that in his report, so I won't bore you with anything else there. And I've also, along with Tavi, I've signed up to take a workshop offered by the MBLC on strategic planning that is being held later this month. It's, I think, a two-hour session, maybe. So given that we'll be launching an effort to create a new strategic plan very soon, and we're already talking about it, it seemed like a very timely useful thing to do. I would urge any of you, if you're interested, you can go on the MBLC website. And when I registered, which was, I think, maybe middle of last week, there were still a few dozen slots open for that particular session, if you're interested.
May I mention something, Steve?
Yes.
When I, when I looked, I got an email because the, actually, that workshop on the 25th is now closed. And they have quite a long waitlist on it. So I was asked, they actually created some new sessions. And they said, you know, would you be interested or would you be available to do another session? So I don't know if I'm going to be on the 25th. I said I could also do March 2nd or the 4th. So you'll see if you want to sign up that the 25th, I think, is pretty much closed out now, but they're going to have other sessions, so.
Okay, thank you, Tavi. And I would also, I think you're all aware of this, but you know, the MBLC, you know, puts out emails on a regular basis on a wide variety of topics relevant to public libraries, training opportunities, as a role of trustees, et cetera. So I would urge any of you, if you haven't already taken advantage of that, or if you're interested in that, just to go to their site, it's very easy to sign up. And it's free, you know, for trustees, so. And then the final thing on my report is just to make you all aware. I'll be working with Tavi to organize, we hope, a meeting of the Facilities Committee sometime in the next month with the goal of holding that meeting prior to the Towns joint session with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to review the both the five-year capital plan and next year's capital projects. So I think that's the end of my report. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, not seeing any. It's so wonderful to see Carolyn alive and connected here with us. So Carolyn, over to you for the financial report.
Yes, thank you. The report for January 2021, under the Town Report expenditures, salaries were $38,242, operating expenses $10,038.51. Under the Friends accounts, expenditures for copier and internet $267.87. Under revolving accounts, under deposits, general contributions were $250. And under trust funds, the deposits were the estimated interest, what, January 21st, of $1,000.
So any comments or questions regarding the budget? Mary Beth?
Those numbers are different than the ones that Tavi sent out by cents. Is just updated recently from my copy. Did anybody else have any discrepancies? All right, if I'm the only one, don't worry about it, then.
I will say, I wasn't, you know, comparing as she was talking with my copy, so I'm not sure if I have a discrepant copy or not.
The copy, the copy I sent to Carolyn is the one that I have right here that I'm looking at, and that's the one that I sent out in your packet, so.
So what was, was there more than one discrepancy, Mary Beth, that you saw, or?
Well, on the salaries, I thought she said a different number than $36,242.
I thought she, I heard 38, so, but mine says 36.
And then the, one of the other ones was cents, a difference, a cents, but I would go with the one that Carolyn has.
No, you're right, it is $36,000. My mistake, I misread it. Okay. It's hard to, it's hard to.
It should be as written.
Okay. Mary, Mary, you're muted.
No. You have 36. Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Tavi, I was just going to say, on the deposits for the contributions, was that mostly memorials? That amount, that's $250, that's, that's a pretty good amount, that's.
An aggregate of memorials, yes.
It was memorials, yeah.
Two, two different memorials, about two checks each for two memorials.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I kind of thought.
Okay, looks like things are financially seem to be on track, doing fine for this year. So that's, that's good news. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're now ready to move on to the Library Directors' Report, over to you, Tavi.
Hey, thank you, Steve. Snow Library Operations, we're continuing to provide contactless curbside service. Still meeting with other library directors on a regular basis through Zoom, and we have not yet set a date when we're going to try to coordinate resuming open browsing hours. So far, three library staff have contracted COVID-19 and have been home recuperating and quarantining. They are all currently back in the library right now, and there haven't been any other cases, although last week there were two family, two family members who had to get tested in two of the staff members' cases because of possible exposure. And so far, they're with negative results. And, you know, due to the heightened awareness, we're still keeping up all the precautions with mask wearing and social distancing and, and wearing gloves and so forth. And very pleased to announce that, as you announced earlier, Steve, that Jeffrey Paris is the new Board Secretary. I welcome him into the position, very happy to have him with us and thankful for his interest, and looking forward to working with him. He replaces Marie Hickey, who held the position for five years. And I'm also very grateful to Melody Gulo for all her work as the Acting Board Secretary. I'd also like to read just briefly, you, you all, all of us received a thank you card from Marie. And she says, I want to thank you so much, trustees, library trustees, for the beautiful card and the note you sent me with the wonderful book Planet Golf USA. It was my pleasure to serve you and the Marion Crane Gallery Committee and the Facilities Advisory Committee over the past five years. Everyone I met and worked with at Snow Library was like working with friends. And she says here, I'm also looking forward to playing some golf in the spring, thanks to the wonderful book. And she misses everyone here and is, again, very grateful and for the privilege and the pleasure of working with all of you. Before, before I get on to the, what's, what else is in my report about the Legislative Luncheon, I also received a word that, good news, that we received the first half of the state aid amount that the state sends out that I apply for every year. It comes in two halves, and the first half usually comes out in the, in the fall. However, because of all of the COVID-19 situation, it's just coming out now. So the first half, we received $4,987.34. And that has been received, I received an email today from the Treasurer's Office. They have actually received it, and so it's in our state aid account line. And the Legislative Luncheon, every year, each library network, and there are nine within the state, hold a legislative event, which is basically a chance for all the librarians to highlight their work and remind the senators and representatives of how important libraries are to their communities. It was virtual this year as everything else was. It was on Friday, January 22nd. Steve went to it, I attended it. And the focus, of course, was on COVID, and there was a very nice collage video that one of the librarians put together. We all sent in photos and pictures from the library showing different COVID-19 precautions and situations that we were going through. And so they showed that, and I think all the representatives and senators were very impressed with it. We did hear from two people. One was the, are the newest Mass Board of Library Commissioners member, Debbie Conrad, who discussed the vital role of increasing funding specifically to the 9501 budget line for state aid to public libraries. And that's very important, and we just got our first half. And line 9506 for library technology and resource sharing, that's also very important, mostly for the network, so that they can keep us connected and provide, provide the the computer system so that we can be part of the consortium. We also heard from Maria McCauley, who's the Director of the Cambridge Public Library, and she's running for an ALA position as well. And so she wanted to talk about all of the things that the Cambridge Public Library has been doing during COVID-19. So I think it was a very successful event, and we're very happy we had it. And then trustees attendance at Friends meetings. So there, there are just some, some vacancies still left to fill. Jan emailed me that she would be attending the March 18th Friends meeting. We still have April 15th. And, oh, Mary, you'll do the April? Okay, great, thank you. And so we, so we have May 20th and June 17th. Now, the May 20th would have to be a trustee who is currently on and will not be going off because technically, the, the election is on May 18th. So all of the members who are going off technically won't be trustees anymore after the election, but the new members won't even have gone to a meeting yet. So I will, I will send out emails asking if anyone is interested.
Can I just ask, is that, is that true? That the I thought that the term doesn't really start until the fiscal year flips. Kevin, do you have any insight on that? Is that, was what Tavi said correct?
Steve, I do know, at least from the Select Board, it triggers that evening. So results.
Immediately.
Midnight, you are the new Select Board Member. I'm not especially sure on library trustees. You guys may want to actually visit that, but if you do follow, you know, the other public official positions in the charter, it is that instant, it's that quick.
Yeah, we always, the, the June meeting, right after the May election, we always had the election of officers and so forth, and the new trustees were there for the June meeting, so. So, but I will, I will be contacting about, about those two dates. And then I have the Youth Services Report to go over. Storytime in a Bag, Jane Ames, a reference librarian, has been working with Anne on doing a Storytime Bag Kit, which would be available like the Storytime, only not just for Thursday mornings, but anytime that any of the, the, the children want to do it. And so she has three kits right now available, and they're working to get them cataloged so that they'll be requestable online, so like through Interlibrary Loan, other libraries can share the kits as well. And when they come back to the library, they'll go to Anne, so she will replenish any of the supplies that were used in each, in each craft bag. She's also going to have two Take and Make Craft Kits available. Last month, there were 35, and we expect there might even be more. And the two new crafts are an accordion snake and a sun catcher in the shape of a heart. Anne has finished weeding the junior fiction, and she's now into the picture book collection. She had a Zoom meeting on Friday, the 5th, with the Orleans Elementary School first grader. She always introduces herself to them, talks about in general the library and, and works with them on issuing them library cards for any who don't have them. Many of them already do, surprisingly, and they're, they're aware because their, their parents have brought them into the library. And she's been providing a lot of readers advisory on the phone, and she has signed up for one of those virtual workshops of the Massachusetts Library System to discuss the virtual summer reading program to get new ideas. That's going to be on Fridays, February 26th. And then she's going to be attending a Zoom meeting of the Community Preservation Project Committee on Thursday, February 25th, and she will there to be, to support the permanent storybook trail at Ruben Pond Trail in Orleans. Oh, and just one more thing, too, is, so I will send out, Steve had mentioned about wanting to have a Facilities Advisory Committee meeting. I did speak with Sarah, and I have some dates for availability, and I will send those out tomorrow in an email to the Facilities Committee members. And then when they come back with their preferences, I'll, I'll tally them all together, and we'll, we'll pick a date that's the best for the majority of people, and I'll send that out. I think that's it.
Thank you, Tavi. Any, any questions for Tavi, Mary Beth? You're muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Ann Foster did a bunch of readers advisory work for me, and I wanted to tell you that she did a great job. So the community, anybody that needs help, please call the library, they're there to help you. My second thing I wanted to ask about the not a delicate way to say it, the contamination of the library. How many library staff now have come down with COVID? And what are the procedures you've done to make the area safe for the rest of you?
Well, there were three that came down with it so far, and, and there were, there were numerous, there were two scares, actually, and they turned out not to be. And so what we've been doing is the, the library, thanks to our, our wonderful custodian, Bob Bates, gets cleaned and sanitized every day. And the way the situation worked, each time we had a positive COVID-19 case, I contacted the Board of Health just to make sure it was doing the right thing. And none of the employees who came down with it had been at the library within the period of time when they get the positive test results and they test back. So if, if they get the positive test results or they're displaying symptoms, the procedure would be, as I understand it, to shut the library down for 24 hours, do the deep cleaning, and then reopen again. But in, in two of the cases, staff were already out of the building before they developed any symptoms and before they got a positive test. So basically, the window, when we would have had the opportunity to shut down the library and do the deep cleaning to open up again, had passed. So that's, so we, we didn't end up having to have an issue so far where someone in, in, we had to shut down the library at that time to clean.
Is the, is the town paying for you guys to have tests done? Or do you have to do that privately?
No, we're there, there, the staff are doing their own tests. They're, they're finding a place to have the test done.
Okay, so that's at their expense.
But Tavi, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as we know, the the contagion was not through the library, so to speak, right?
That, that's correct. We, we have not, we, I, I don't have any evidence to suggest that it was through the library. Through the three staff members who got it, got it from either coworkers where the family member worked or from a family member who got it probably at work, we imagine.
Kevin, how, how was the town handling that testing of employees?
That's a good question, Mary Beth. I really will need to get back to you on that. I do know there's a protocol. Bob Canning or Alex Fitch would probably be the best to contact, and I'll do that right now.
Okay, because I think it's really important that the rest of the staff feels safe.
Exactly.
And it's, there's enough stress right now. We don't need to have anybody have anymore. And also, just from the, from the townwide perspective, that everything is copacetic. When you have them, the materials quarantined, for sure, everything's okay. So I would just like to encourage some movement on that.
Oh, go ahead, Mel.
Tavi, question, last month, you reported that there was some incident of some of the workers had been exposed to or had that, are these three new cases in this from last month?
No, one, one was late December, and the other one was the second week of January, and the third was the week after, and so their quarantine periods are over with and they're back. And we did have a couple of scares again where a family member might have been positive, and so, you know, they were waiting to see what the test results were, but they were negative.
Okay, okay.
So while we're on the topic of COVID, I guess, Kevin, I'm wondering, is there anything you could share as to why Orleans has trended into the red zone?
Yeah.
Bob Canning, and if I can look back at my notes, as you know, he gives us a COVID-19 update. So this was at our meeting on the 3rd last Wednesday, and his words were, I do not have good news. We had at that point, 70, 70 active cases. 126 cropped up in January. The clusters were what caused us to go over the line because the previous week, we're in, I think, the yellow, not the red category. And a lot of it is due to the close proximity and lack of social distancing in our home settings. It does not appear to be from workplaces, it does not appear to be in schools. It appears to be social gatherings, people not following precautions. And as the governor continues to say, when I listen to his press conferences, stay vigilant, folks. We really need to get out of this. So, yeah, our numbers were not good last week.
So it sounds like it might have been like the holiday surge, so to speak.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Beth. Any other questions for Tavi on his report? Thank you, Tavi. So Karen, over to you for a report from the Friends.
Hi, I'm Karen Kishpa. I just joined the Friends, I guess, over the summer to do social media postings to increase publicity for the Friends of Snow Library. So just as a plug for that, if any of you are on Facebook or Instagram, check us out, give us a like or a follow, it increases the algorithms, makes us get more, more seen. So you'll find us there. Okay, so the report, we have Lifetime Learning. The winter-spring session started on February 1st. As of January 21st, 268 people had turned in 1,143 registrations. And I know I took a class last week on Norman Rockwell, and there were 81 participants. So it seems, it's continuing to be a very popular thing to do during COVID especially. Maplewood and Brewster has agreed to pay us for courses again this session, so that's good. Membership has increased by 11 people so far this year. The money that we transferred to socially responsible investment funds appears to be doing well so far, but at the time, the Financial Advisory Committee met with the Cape Cod Five folks for the quarterly meeting last month, not enough time had passed from the date of investment to get a comparison for how those funds did versus our regular investments. And the big thing Tracy wanted me to talk to you about is, at our upcoming meeting, which I think is next week, I'm not sure about that, I think it's next week, we're going to be discussing how the Friends can coordinate a campaign to raise money for Snow Library on Library Giving Day, which is April 7th, 2021. And there's a link for it, if you'd like to check it out. It is just libriorgivingday.org, and that will give you a lot of information about it. It is a one-day giving fundraising event with the goal of encouraging people who depend on and enjoy public libraries to donate their individual, to donate to their individual library system. And in turn, that support will go toward the incredible programs, services, and materials provided by local libraries all over the country. This was started by the Seattle Public Library Foundation. And that's basically the things that we have to report. Not much is going on, the outdoor book sales are not happening, obviously, due to weather. You know, we're anxious to start those up. We also can't take donations right now because there's just nowhere to put them. So we're looking forward to getting back to some kind of normal eventually. But Lifetime Learning has been going really well.
Thank you, Karen, that's great that the Friends are going to mount a campaign on Library Giving Day.
Good.
Any, any questions for Karen about her report, or anything the Friends are doing?
I have a question. Was there a Library Giving Day last year, and did we do anything?
I don't think so. This is new. I don't know. I wasn't there.
A new holiday?
I think it's new. But I can ask Tracy and we'll get back to you. That's a good question.
Do you need any help from us, Karen?
That's another, we haven't even discussed it as a committee yet. So we'll get back to you. But thank you. Thanks for asking. I will pass this on, okay?
Any other questions?
Just one question. When the if people give on Library Giving Day, does the money go to the Friends of the library or the library?
You know what? Let me look it up. Would you like me to look it up right now? I'm not sure.
Well, that's okay. It's just something that people will probably want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't researched it. I was just imagining that you could set it up however, you know, but that
Yeah, I would.
But the intention would be to give the money to the library, not to the Friends.
Library. But the Friends could get it started or sign up for it and
Sure, yeah.
Get it going.
I guess we'll learn more maybe next month, you know, after the Friends have had a chance to discuss what their thoughts are on.
Yeah, I just heard about it today. So
Mary Beth?
Yeah, that would be a great thing to put in Snow website too, Snow Library website.
And I'll have it on social media. I'd like to partner with that. Yeah.
You know, I wonder also whether there might be an opportunity to collaborate with the other public libraries and actually put ads in, you know, like the Cape Codder, the Chronicle.
Great idea.
With with links to each of the library sites of donation, so to speak. Just a thought to consider.
Okay, I'll bring it all up when we talk next week.
And Steve?
Jan?
Who's our rep going this month to the Friends?
Carolyn is.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Maybe, yeah, see if there's something else we could do.
Joan, did you have a question?
I was gonna ask the same thing, who's representing us? So it's Carolyn. So it's good.
Hey.
Hi, Carolyn.
Hi.
You got some work now. Any other questions for Karen? Great. Thank you very much, Karen. So do we have any other reports? I guess I could mention that I think the good news is three, at least three people have pulled papers to run for trustee in the upcoming election. So that's good news. We'll see if they actually follow through and, you know, finish it up. But I'm optimistic that that will happen. So any other, anything else to report from anyone? Do we have any old business? I think our old business is actually new business, right? The long range plan, kind of review and kind of talk us through the plan, I think, as was suggested from last meeting. So I think that's over to you, Tavi.
Right. Thanks, Steve.
Everybody will see they got a copy of the plan and the packet that Tavi sent out.
So what I'm going to do, if it's all right with you, rather than go through all the goals and objectives, I was going to focus on the activities, because I think the idea is to see what has been done, what is ongoing, and what has not been done. So I'm going to start on page seven, where the actual beginning starts with the activities. And under goal one, objective one, three activities, select a second staff member to learn the reporting system. That's the CLAMs reporting system. And we actually currently have three people who have learned that. I'm one of them. The assistant director is one of them. And the tech services librarian is one of them. And activity two, each purchasing department should learn the reporting system. Yes, basically, we're the ones who do the ordering and the purchasing. And so we're the ones, that's why we were designated to learn them. Activity three, designate a person to weed the collection in each department. Yes, we have that and we've been doing it. We've been doing it all along. Under objective two, activity one, solicit feedback from staff on interpreting information from reports. Yes, we're doing it now and it's constantly ongoing. We're always getting feedback from staff. Activity two, develop a system to capture information on popular areas from circulation staff. The CLAMs reports are able to do that. And so we have that provided by our consortia reporting system. Activity three, create a system to make the public aware of the new purchases. CLAMs has them on their site. And we also, when the public was coming in here, we have them in print as well of all the new titles suggesting that people put holds on them.
You've also got the WOW.
WOW Berry as well. Yes, WOW Berry as well.
Tavi, before you go on, I have a question. I'm new to this strategy. When the activity three, you say designate a person. Activity one is a staff. So can a person be a volunteer then?
Well, the the staff, because it's a collection, it's collection development, we have the staff doing the weeding. Because the weeding, some places call it deselection. So you have to you have to know the collection, you have to use print guides or electronic guides to see. And that's the whole point of the report is you see how many times a book or a material has gone out, what condition it's in and so forth. And you make you make decisions based on that. We have had volunteers who get a weeding report and then pull the items and then put them on a cart, but still either the assistant director or the reference librarian or the youth services librarian or I actually go through the items ourselves.
So but that's why you're using person, because you could have a volunteer help you do it versus a staff person?
Yes, I don't I don't I don't think when this was written, we were very conscious of the distinction. I think we just said, you know, just designate a person, because we do have volunteers who have in the past helped with that.
Right. And so it's just, it's good to.
Yeah, just like to say something.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I think it's very, very important. And I'm sure Mary Beth and anybody who's been in libraries would agree with me that when you you don't have, you may the books, but the final decision is always done through the staff who reviews a lot more than just like whatever, how many times it's gone out. I think volunteers, I remember them pulling tons of books that we generated from a report. And that was very helpful because you didn't have to waste your time pulling the book. But using that report and what you knew about what the expectations of the community were, the value of the work, whether it went out a lot or not, are very important to know. So when you say person, I don't know if it makes a difference if you put staff, but people, whatever.
Yeah, I would.
I think is really important.
Help me very much, because I'm not a librarian.
Yeah, I would agree that the ultimate decision is a staff member, you know, that volunteers certainly can can help in the process. But, you know, it's and it's, you don't know, it's like circulation data in and of itself is not the be all and end all of.
Yeah, you have to look at all kinds of things. But certainly, we can fight your way through. So much.
Right.
And under under goal two, objective one, activity one, develop a speaker list on a popular subject in the community. We have the references always been doing that. It's ongoing. Activity two, annual public survey to gather topics of interest. That's only been done informally. We have we have not really done any surveys that are online or or actually even in print. However, we do, when the public was coming in, we do have a suggestion box. We also have slips that people can take at the desk. They're also actually in the vestibule that people can take to make recommendations for purchases for the library or on topics as well. Then it gets forwarded to the staff member who's in charge of that area and they review it and then most likely purchase it or contact the patron of purchasing something similar on the topic. Activity three, solicit information from staff on popular subjects in the community. That has been going on and it's it's ongoing all the time.
You know, Tavi, it just occurs to me that that goal and objective is interesting and just but that the role that the Friends play in that, you know, I wonder, as we think going forward, if that ought to be formally acknowledged, so to speak, since they play such a huge role in offering programs, you know, to the community.
Right. Well, you know, that that actually, there's another item here in activity, which I'm going to mention that that actually it's it's lifetime learning, really. And you'll see a few of these on here when I go through them, that really the staff and I rely on lifetime learning, which is the Friends, to provide us with information.
Right.
It's coming up a little later. Activity one on page eight, develop a list of contact persons within each community organization. Yes, we have that as best we can. And it's constantly being updated and it's ongoing, not only for all the departments, but usually contacts for different community organizations. Activity two, designate staff to act as liaison to community organizations. We have two so far that are very delineated. One is Ann, who is the liaison to all of the schools. And we have Betty at reference, who is the liaison to the senior center. And then Kaime and I basically liaison with any other organization as they come up. We can't really get other staff members involved in it because circulation is constantly at the desk. They really have no off desk hours. So it's pretty much reference, assistant director and director. Under goal one on page eight, objective one, activity one, create a unique space for the young adult area. What we did is, because the young adult area upstairs in the mezzanine was being used as a hangout, and we wanted to have a place where where students, young adults could play video games and so forth, or do or do research. What Ann did was she set up four computer carols, for study carols with computers in them right next to the children's area, so that she and the reference librarian could monitor them. And that was kind of the unique space we were considering for them. And we still have the space upstairs when the library was open for young adults to have their own area. Activity two, provide easier access and better lighting in the large print area. We did get different lighting in the large print area and also added a light in there the last time the electrician was in. So so that's been done. These next two, they haven't been done. It involves work with the DPW. Activity three, improve the entrance and handicapped accessibility into including the parking spaces near the rear ramp. When I had discussions with the DPW and Ron, they were going to look at that around the same time that the pump station was going in when they were thinking they were going to do work on the parking lot. And then activity four, provide ramp access from the parking lot into the Marion Crane Room. We've had some discussions about that. That's kind of a lengthier project, because it would involve restructuring the landscaping and restructuring the curbs that we have there. So neither one of those have yet been done. Activity five, provide continuous light from the entrance to all the parking areas, including up the stairs by the the middle school. That's been done. That was done in 2018. And also out in the front as well. So I think our lighting is is great now.
Tavi, go ahead, Joan.
Tavi, do you know if you looked at ADA funds for the ramp? Because there's someone on the bike committee who is looking into see if there's ADA funds available for some sidewalk ramps and things like that. And because we we don't have any in the town, there's not even a handicap commission anymore or disability commission. But Stephanie from the bike committee is very interested in it. So I don't know whether or not you would want to talk to her.
Yeah, we haven't. We haven't even looked at the funding. We were just trying to discuss how we would go about doing it, like what, if anything, could be done there. So I think we'll probably start talking about funding if we can find sort of a timeline or a consideration of when something like this would be done to get a better idea about it. So I would work with DPW on that, on both of those projects.
Tavi, I was wondering, have you have you gotten any update on when the pump station work will begin?
Um, Kaime had to contact Ron Collins about another issue. And so she asked him. And as far as I last heard, it's the fall now.
Fall.
Fall.
So we should be diligent about the, you know, kind of activity three then, as you suggest, as it relates to
Yes. Objective two, activity one, facilities advisory committee and staff will visit other CLAMs libraries to develop ideas for improvements. It was done individually, I know, by a couple of members, and that was in relation to the building program, as is the next one. Facilities Advisory Committee and Staff will collect ideas of what needs improvement to share with the consultant. That was done with Mary Brainy when the building program was being written. Goal two, objective one, activity one, designate a person on staff as a technology and website coordinator. We actually have three people. We share the responsibility. We don't really have one person. Kaime is really the website coordinator. And then between Kaime and whoever's at reference and 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 Ann and I, we sort of share the technology. Activity to develop a list of all equipment now in use in the library. Yes, we have that. It's been an internal document that we've been working on for years already. And then activity three, request training from the Massachusetts library system. We had one training, we want to do more. And we were planning on doing more, but then because of COVID-19, we haven't done any more at that time. But we're planning it now because of the ability to be able to zoom. There are actually three staff members who are going to be attending programs that have to do with technology or cataloging, having to do with this, because because it is available in a virtual format. Objective to the next page, so page nine, activity one, work with lifetime learning committee members to ascertain their needs from presenters. That's ongoing. We've always encouraged them to let us know what what improvements can be made so that we can we can work with them on it and try to get that done. Two, negotiate improvements with the Marion Crane Gallery Committee. Yes and no. One of them was the the security camera so that no more artwork gets stolen. That was done and completed. And then we're still working on the second one, which is they wanted the room painted. And so now the issue is even though people aren't coming in, we're using the Marion Crane Room. It's all filled with equipment because of the quarantining and storage. And also now there are some of the lifetime learning classes that are zooming in there. So we're still working on the painting aspect of it. And then activity three, staff will develop a list of presenters' needs for use in the Marion Crane Room. We depend very heavily on lifetime learning, letting us know what their needs are. And they've been wonderfully proactive in actually going out and securing the equipment they need. A lot of these things on here, too, different different staff members from the library or different parts of the library community, like the Friends and Lifetime Learning can also participate in. Under objective three, activity one, an online public access catalog in the lower level. We haven't done that yet because of all the wireless issues. We've we're just getting a strong wireless signal in the lower level of the library. The Friends, for the longest time, couldn't even access wireless there. So we're still working on that. So that hasn't been done because of the wireless issue. Activity to designate a large room for a maker space, the best we could do was the Snow Studio. And that's Kaime applied for the grant and she's done that. So we've we've accomplished that. Activity three, provide a scanner connected to a computer for patron use. We have that at the reference desk. We got that in 2018. And then activity four, provide laptops for to borrowers for in library use. That's something that we're in the process of doing. And we were going to wait to combine that with the survey, the satisfaction survey, to see if that was something that people really wanted in library as well as as checking them out to people.
Tavi, I have a question just about the scanner. So that means that when someone wants to scan, they have to do it through a staff member? So that means that when someone wants to scan, they have to do it through a staff member?
Um, now they do, they didn't before. When, when we had patrons coming into the building, you could come in and you, yes, you'd still have to go to the reference desk because normally people wouldn't know the procedure to go through the scanning. So they'd have to, you know, ask reference. But basically people were able from late 2018 to come in and scan a document.
I, I guess I'm still, I just want to be clear on this, but to do it, they have to use the reference librarian's computer?
Uh, not, not the reference librarian's computer, but the computer next to, we have a separate designated computer.
Okay.
That's hooked up to it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, goal three, objective one, activity one, each department will list the content it wishes to mount on the website. Yes, we've been, we've been doing that, trying to do that with the new website. Objective two, activity one, each department will be responsible for two updates per month. Yes, and, and actually many more. I, I send updates, Kaimee has her updates, Anne sends updates. Activity two, each staff member will attend a training session on one social media format a year. It's ongoing and circulation staff really haven't had a lot of opportunity to do a lot with social media because they're always at the desk. But we are having staff members at reference try to learn a new social media format each year. And goal four, activity one, staff will continue to document the conflicts between uses and inadequacies of the, inadequacies of the library's one meeting room. Yes, and we've been doing that all along, especially was difficult when we had lifetime learning programs in the building, along with our programs in the building. There, there were always, I'm sorry to say, conflicts sometimes, although I think we've, we've kind of got them down. We were getting very good at, at coordinating every time there was a change, but we are documenting all of that. And then activity two, staff will maintain a list of improvements needed to support cultural programming in the library. Yes, that's ongoing, it's been ongoing. We rely very heavily from lifetime learning and the friends as well to let us know any needs that they see. On page 10, under goal one, objective one, library staff will survey the adult community for programs of interest and designate a staff member to organize these adult programs. It's been done on an informal basis and we were talking about including that in with the survey, the satisfaction survey, but it's, it's really gone on informally for quite a long time. Patrons would come in, patrons would call, they would email their interests and say, do, do you have any, are you planning on having any programs on this and that? So it's actually been going on already. Activity two, schedule a program on CLAMs library technology use. We have done a couple in the past when we had programs in the building. Jamie's actually done those. And then activity three, survey other libraries within the state for current and popular programs. We did do that in 2018. And we're also, we're also just doing that informally by email and going to other libraries' websites. Anne in particular is always having meetings with other youth services librarians to survey what they're doing. And, and I'm also, I'm on a, I'm on a list, I'm on a blog, a programming blog, so that I see what other libraries are doing and comparing programs with them. Under objective two, activity one, research available technology by contacting a media technology specialist. Lifetime learning did that, Don Willett has been in contact three times with a technology specialist about various different issues. And then activity two, train lifetime learning members on audio visual equipment. And lifetime learning has been very great in doing that and they have wonderful volunteers who are, and especially this now time with all of the virtual programming. They've actually had to work directly with presenters in order to get them up to speed to do the Zoom classes. Objective three, activity one, develop a list of new technology with instructions on its use. Lifetime learning, when they get a new technology, they've been doing that and we've been working with staff on that as well. And then goal two, objective one, activity one, work with lifetime learning committee presenters to determine topics of interest for the library to purchase or make available through SNOW and other libraries. They, the, the movie class does that, they sub, usually submit a list of the DVDs that they're planning on showing so we can make them available. And the same thing when they have book discussions or any of the literature classes to make the, the subject matter available. So we've been working with them on that for quite a while. And then on page 11, the last page, objective one, activity one, contact other agencies to determine interest in space to collaborate and create a list of other agencies for future contact. It's basically been two so far that we've contacted. One has been the school and the other has been, I had a meeting with Brian Saasner from the planning board and, and Joanna Keely as well. And we were talking about the use of the Firehouse Gallery for programs, a possible mutual programs. And we did that unfortunately in, in December of 19 and January of 20. And then, you know, all of the programs, the lifetime learning already had their programs set up for that semester. And then we've been doing them virtually right now, but we're still planning on keeping touch, in touch with them to see if there any, any way our mutual spaces can be beneficial to one another. And then activity two, provide information on a staff, on the staff bulletin board, communicating lifetime learning, offering information to staff. Yes, that's been done and it's, it's posted on both the staff bulletin board in the back and actually also now with the Plexi, Plexiglas at the circulation desk, that also the lifetime learning offerings are posted there as well.
Oh, is that what that just means, Tommy, at lifetime learning programs?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Lifetime, yeah, provide information on communicating lifetime learning, offering information to the staff. In other words, so that when people call or they have information, that they have it right there and they can refer to. And so by, just, just informally by going through this, I would say that probably like al- almost three quarters of the activities on there have been done and one quarter have not been done.
Tommy, if you look, I think it's amazing that you got three quarters done because sometimes you don't get hardly anything done. If you look at this, what would be your biggest takeaway of what you would like to continue for next, the next five years? Something that maybe didn't get done or that we can help you with or?
Um, you probably, I, I mean, I would say the ones where we, we haven't really made any, any progress at all would be the ones where, I mean, we're relying on like, for example, the DPW schedule. Like when, when you're doing any kind of these physical things with the building or so forth. I mean, that, that's so difficult because, you know, when they come and take a look at it, you know, you've kind of got to slot yourself in. You know, because the DPW does everything with the rest of the town. So, and that, that's probably the hardest. You also have to look at if there's going to be any kind of disruption to service. You know, that's, that's the other thing too with some of these that involve disruption to service. You want to try to minimize that as much, as much as possible. So I would say probably with most of these, the only ones that I can really say were like definite no's were, were those relating to the physical changes. And also we could do more with training. I think that's, that's always a challenge is the training. Finding time when you schedule staff to do a training because you've either got to get somebody who can fill in or you have to get a substitute while they're at the training. So that, that's, that's been a challenge as well.
What do you think about the youth services? Do you think there's more we could do there?
Um, well, I think, I think.
Teens, I should say, not young, not what Anne covers, but more that next age group.
Well, we've tried, we've tried different programs for teens. We've tried having movies. In fact, Mary, actually, when, when you were director, we, you were trying out the movie, movie afternoons. We've tried movie afternoons.
Best to put a basketball hoop in the library too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really what I, what I have found talking with youth services librarians at a lot of these now virtual, but what used to be the New England Library Association meetings, is that teens seem to want a place to hang out. It seems that when you have the structured programs, you'll always get some who are interested. In fact, actually Kaimee was working with Anne and then, you know, never really, it, it did get off the ground. We had some sessions, but then the COVID-19 shutdown occurred. But there was a doodling, like a doodling, after school doodling program and drawing program after school. And so we really didn't get a chance to see how popular that was going to be because it had to, it had to get curtailed. So something like that, I think, is always interesting. But for example, I mean, the, the movies, the afternoon movies, that, they didn't really work out that well. Even, even surveying them to see what they want, it just, it just didn't really seem to work. It seems like the majority who come here, they're interested in either doing schoolwork, which we help them with, or, or they're studying and reading on their own, or they just want to hang out, you know, and talk and, and be with their friends.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that has been a, I was a, that was my age group for my library experience all through my career. And it's a, an ongoing problem, has been from this, the get go and will continue for, forever. That, that age group is a really tough nut to handle, especially with limited staffing. They need constant staffing and a place to go. So it's really hard. But I think that one of the problems in the past that I dealt with when we talked to the middle school also was that their schedule is so full at the end of the day with, with activities that they have, that it's really hard to have enough ideas and spaces and people to handle them after school. Because they have, there's too many other things pulling them to other locations.
I, you know, I, I think the big challenge, one of the big challenges we're going to face with the new strategic plan is, you know, around the facility and how to effectively incorporate improvements to the facility in, in the plan in a way that is actionable, so to speak. So, interesting.
Space and staff are two huge problems.
Yep. Other comments or questions for Tommy, Mary?
Oh, this is just a comment. I think that the, the change in the library website is phenomenal.
Yeah.
And I don't see it in, in anything on the plan there. But I just want to tell you, I think that's been huge because it took, you know, we were so far behind in terms of making an attractive website and you did a great job with it. And I tell everybody about it, I say, go look at it, go look at it. That's just really, we needed it so much and you did a great job with it, even if it's not in the plan.
No, well, it actually, I think, was in the plan, right, Tommy?
Yeah, it was in, in action, in action plans.
Right, but I, I certainly agree with Mary and how to build on that going forward, I think, will, is another important thing to, for us to consider. Anything else? Well, thank you very much, Tommy. So I think, I think at our next meeting, you know, we, we can, you know, as these ideas percolate among us all, you know, we need to start, you know, continue discussing, you know, a timeline and process for, for the new strategic plan. I think that hopefully will be informed, help, in a positive way, I hope by the sessions. Tommy and I will both be attending, you know, from the MBLC on strategic planning, so, Mary Beth?
Um, Tommy, I think a lot of this has to be generated from in-house with the staff members. Are, are you, have you scheduled a, a time for staff to, to make suggestions or are you in that process right now?
Oh, I'm in the process right now. I mean, they, they definitely, I, I will do it formally, but, and will probably do it in like a special staff meeting format, but the staff are, I always encourage them to come to me with anything, any improvements they need to see all the time. I mean, so, and I, and I'm always keeping a list.
Okay.
So that kind of thing is ongoing, but especially for something like the long range plan, that is one of the things they say in that book, Strategic Planning for Success, is that, you know, you need to schedule just a time with staff, just to consult them and get all of this feedback from them. So, and that, and that plays an important role when you're writing it.
So you're scheduling a time to just specifically do that sometime in the next couple of months?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, Tommy, I wouldn't hold you to those next couple of months because, you know, I don't think we've actually mounted the process yet.
Yeah.
So, but certainly it will be an important part of the process. Okay, I think then we're through the agenda. Is anybody, is there anything else anyone wants to add at this point or? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm over.
Mary?
I second.
Second from now, so thank you all and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in March, I guess.